Well, I know Carolyn, I don't know if it's still decent. No, 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 we have them too. Ken, did you get all the stuff from Michael at all, all that stuff that he gives you, so you're up to date? Alright, are you guys ready? Alright, we'll call the meeting to order on October 7th at the Town Garage at 6:00 P.M. Hi Carolyn, I just want to remind everyone that this is a select board meeting, and we have rules for this, and the rules will be applied. It is not a public hearing, it's a select board's meeting, it is a select board. I would also like to add two items to the agenda. One is, the next meeting of the select board meeting is October 17th, assuming that the plan was adopted. I don't think that'll happen, but if it is, that is a select board meeting, it's not on the agenda. And to the executive session, besides personnel, cemeteries, and health officers of Wyndham Foundation. Yes, Bill?
Whether or not it's approved, you need a meeting on the seventh day to assess the next.
Right, we have to set a new hearing date, assuming that it's not.
What was the second item, please?
We're gonna add the Wyndham Foundation to the executive session for personnel, cemeteries, and health officers. Alright, so we need a motion to adopt the agenda as presented, as amended?
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, we need somebody to approve or amend the minutes of the 16th?
Do we wanna do the...
Bill said it's all one.
It's all one?
It's all one.
Well, I have some.
Well, go ahead.
My...
Go ahead.
On the, on the meeting itself, on page five, under six, under highway, as you go in, there was a discussion about mandatory amounts going to the fund or discretionary. It lists as limb record, that's probably supposed to be a K rather than an L.
I don't know where you are.
Under, under highway?
Page five.
Page five.
Five lines down.
About five lines down, there was a discussion about mandatory amounts, and it's just the, the name is, should be a K, not an L. Down a little bit more, about four more lines down, ensued, including the danger of going into deficit budget situation. There's an "of" in there, which I don't think belongs there. Situation, all the re-treatment money received was put into. I may be wrong on that one, I think there should, should be "of" there.
If, if all.
Okay, if all. And then, all the way down to eight, third line down, Joe Polio visited with Errol, his name is spelled.
Any other additions or corrections to the minutes of the... Motion to amend, approve the minutes as amended?
Second.
Do we have second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes? Oh, that's right, one abstention, Alan wasn't here, sorry. So it's four, four, four yes and one abstention. Okay, the warrants were presented to the board, the board did sign them, so they have been approved, and I'm assuming that the checks have gone out. We have the school district, so David, would you like to start?
Thank you, yes, I'm David Clark, I represent Westminster on the Bellas Falls Union High School Board.
Do you want to come up, come up here?
There's a chair here, if you'd like to sit here, you won't.
I'm okay standing, these is my fidgeting. Just FYI, I do have some passouts. I sorely underestimated the size of your crowd, so I have two for each row, and one each for the select board. I don't think that I'm going to really refer to those very much, simply background of the lawsuit. So as I said, my name is David Clark, I am a member of the Bellas Falls Union High School Board, representing Westminster in that capacity. I'm also Chair of the Wyndham Northeast Supervisory Union Board, which is the supervisory superintendent services for Athens, Grafton, Westminster, Rockingham, and Union High School. In addition to that, I also serve as the Executive Director of the Alliance of Vermont School Board Members, which holds the rapidly dwindling war chest for the Act 46 lawsuit. That lawsuit currently has been appealed to the Supreme Court, and a response, a rebuttal, has been filed by the Attorney General's Office. That's referenced on the second page of the documents that you have there. And I'm anticipating that there, well, this is based on advice of counsel, in this case David Kelly, who's the attorney, who has been drafting the lawsuit with some professional help from Steve Codius at Taren Gillis and Richardson, which is a politically savvy Montpelier law firm. Okay. We anticipate that there will likely be oral arguments, possibly late this month or next month, and then it's hoped that the Supreme Court will render what I believe will be a favorable decision shortly thereafter. What you need to know about the lawsuit are two things. Number one, Vermont is what's known as Dylan's Rules State. And what that means is municipalities, be it the town of Grafton, or Athens, or Westminster Town School Boards, or Grafton Town School Boards, are all creations of the legislature. The legislature has the power to amend those municipalities at will. And the basis of the lawsuit, at least one of the questions that's raised, is whether in fact the legislature can delegate the authority to amend these municipalities, known as school boards, in lieu of the legislature. I would say that if you look at it a long time, it certainly appears as if the legislature would like to keep their hands off the process so that they have what's sometimes known as plausible deniability. And we didn't close any schools, it was the State Board of Education that caused it. Act 46 itself was intended for two purposes, one allegedly to save money, the second purpose was to create equity, which is a kind of a broad concept among schools with varying, varying populations and resources. I think the single most dangerous thing about Act 46 is that what it will do, if it is successful, if the Attorney General is able to make his point stick, and the Supreme Court rules against the Act 46 lawsuit, you will set up a precedent whereby state agencies can overrule duly-worn and executed local votes, and that's gonna have some very serious going-forward implications for Vermont democracy. I did mention the fact that the Vermont Alliance of School Board Members has been collecting money and paying lawyers, there was one very generous donation from an anonymous donor, and we're hopeful at this point that we will at least make it through oral arguments with what we've got. It's the select board, it's, it's your meeting, and if your select board chair wishes to ask questions, I can attempt to answer them, but school finance is not my strong suit. Okay, thanks, I'll sit down.
Do you have any questions of David?
I do want to put in one pitch here, if you wanna get deep in the weeds with the lawsuit and the rebuttal, those documents are posted to the Alliance of Vermont School Board Members website, which is A.V.S.B.M dot O R G. I anticipate that the Attorney General's rebuttal to the lawsuit, which is on the homepage of the Alliance's website, will go up in a day or two. So if anyone suffers from insomnia, there's about 300 pages that you can use to help cure it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, David. The explanation, who's gonna try to explain to us this education funding cash flow for Athens, Grafton, and Westminster?
I think probably me.
Okay.
And I don't think you ought to spend too much time going through all the detailed sheets, because they're very complicated, and it would take you quite a bit of time. So I tried to prepare a simple schedule, which will show why we're giving money to the state and other towns are not in our district. So maybe you asked me out here. What I've got here is an education funding simple cash flow. The factors to determine a town's education tax liability and funding requirements are the following. A town's homestead and non-residential grant list, a town's homestead and non-residential tax rate, after it's been adjusted by the CLA, a town's percent of equalized pupils in Bellas Falls High School, and the new Wyndham Northeast School District, school budgets for the high school and the new school district, and homestead education tax credits, which people call predates that come back to some people who file homesteads. So the next note there is the funds required to fund the schools in Grafton, Athens, and Westminster. The high school, and this is adjusted by what the equalized pupils, that's what determines, based on the budgets that have been set, what a town is liable for. Grafton is liable for 539,041 of the high school, and a million 41,868, or a total of a million 58909, to educate its equalized pupils according to state law. Athens' total is 1,304,277, and Westminster is 6,213,553 dollars. Or a total of, for everybody of those three towns, 9,098,739 dollars. Now, where does that money come to satisfy the need for this education money? It comes from the taxes collected by state law that the towns of Grafton, Athens, and Westminster collect. The homestead adjusted by state payments amount, which is Grafton's total, is 615,063. And this is calculated by taking whatever the, the rate is reduced by the CLA times the homestead grant list. And that's the same for all three towns. And our CLA is 111.71, which means the original number, which would determine for the high school and for the Wyndham Northeast, is reduced by that amount because of the CLA, which is higher than 100%. In Athens, their total amount that they collect is 447,000 dollars, and in Westminster, 3,878,235. And Grafton's total was 2,094,924. So based on the non-residential grant list in Grafton, and the homestead grant list in Grafton, we collect 2,094,924 dollars. To educate our kids, we only have to spend 1,058,909. So what happens is, by state law, we have to give the difference, which is 514,115 dollars, back to the state of Vermont. Athens, on the other hand, their liability is 1,003,04, but they only collect 447,000 dollars through taxes. So if the state funds back to them, 856,832 dollars. And for Westminster, their obligation is 6,213, they collect in taxes, based on state law, 3,878,235, and so they get back 2,335,318 dollars. So that's what happens, the way the school districts are funded for the three towns that we're looking at here. Any questions?
How many full times have come up students that Grafton had?
I really don't know, because that is not in the document, it just gives you a percentage of what it is.
Does anybody know?
What was the question? There's current enrollment totals about 54.
We're trying to absorb this thing too, address forward this way.
I think we have a total of 49, and it's almost a 50 split, Athens has one more than Grafton does.
Does that include the high school?
Yeah, there's two budgets. So there's an equalized student calculation for the high school and for the Wyndham Northeast Regionalists. And it's not the same, because the high school is much less, you know, Grafton, the three towns combined are much less in the total, whereas the three towns here equal 100% of the Wyndham Northeast Regionalist.
Am I wrong, but does this sum up to 30,000 dollars a student?
No, I don't think so, because it's equalized. I don't think, what, what Kim said is not the equalized number, that's today's number. But you can infer from that going forward. That could be a big problem. If the equalized pupils go down, and the budgets don't go down, the taxes are going like that.
Why, just, just a quick, why is that last column of the total showing a negative 2,678?
That's because the state is giving us 2,678, whereas before, I'm just showing that we have to give money. So they're getting money back, we're giving money. If you add all three together, you come up with a 2,678.
Oh, that, okay, I see.
That's a total.
Yeah, okay.
So you don't have a pupil, per pupil cost?
Uh, no. There's one in the, in those sheets there, I believe, but...
Probably 16,000?
Yeah, something, 18, I think.
I believe we're 18 now.
18. But I don't think we're in the penalty situation yet. You know, there's, if, if you get over state mandated level by so much, there's another penalty. Again, I'm not a guru here, I'm not on the school board, I just happened to look, dig into this a little bit since I was given these sheets last week.
We're still considered a gold town?
Huh?
Still considered a gold town?
We're considered a gold town because we give money back to the state. I never completely understood that. Now, I'm sure there's a lot of other gold towns, like Manchester or Ski Area Town, but it's all dependent on your grant list. If your grant list is higher than the other towns in your district, and you generate more money on that grant list than what it costs to educate your students, goes back to the state.
Alan, you have a question?
Yeah, I've now got a question for David. You're still on duty? In the lawsuit, and I haven't read how, how it's described, but as it was explained to me, if I have it correctly, our school budget per pupil, as we voted it, worked out to about 16,000 dollars per student for just the Grafton-Athens portion. Once the merger came with Westminster, it was told to me, our, our responsibility now works out because of the debt that Wynd, that Westminster has, that now our share will be 18,000 per student, which also changes our status. And because now we are listed as spending 18,000 per student on a debt that we did not vote on to help pay the debt for Westminster, now we're gonna be penalized because we're listed as a gold town. To me, I don't know if this is part of the lawsuit, but if I was to write my wishes, I would like to have that explained or at least identified. To me, that's a case where we voted a budget for our students, and based on that, so be it. But then we're told 2,000 dollars per student more, and therefore now you're above the ceiling, and now you're gonna get penalized again. To me, that's a double whammy.
Would you like a response to that?
First, first tell me if you think my numbers are way off.
I think, I think your numbers are approximately correct, Alan. What you should understand is that all three towns passed school budgets at town meeting.
Correct.
However, the Agency of Education refused to recognize the validity of those school budgets, and instead, we were compelled to create one unified school budget with the tax base comprised of Athens, Grafton, and Westminster. One of the arguing points in the lawsuit, Alan, is that under 17 VSA, it states that a municipality cannot incur bonded indebtedness without an affirmative vote from their voters. And that, it would appear that Act 46 clearly contravenes the Vermont Constitution in that regard. Now, that 18,000 dollar number, I believe, is approximately correct, but I hesitate to call it the silver lining. But next year, Athens and Grafton will have the benefit of being able to share Westminster's reserve funds, which are very substantially in excess of what Athens and Grafton have for reserve funds, and therefore, that very likely will reduce your school taxation.
Why next year?
Because that will be realized in fiscal year 20.
Yeah, but we have to absorb their debt now.
You are absorbing our debt right now, that is correct.
And, and just for the record, I'm not upset with Westminster, I'm upset with the state. So I'm not directing my question, I knew, I tried to explain the situation, but I know where the problem is.
I live in Westminster, and I think it is hugely unjust.
Correct.
The, the education spending per equalized pupil in Bellas Falls Union High School is 17,868,43, and for the Wyndham Northeast Regionalist, 18,477,13. That's what it is. And there is no penalty, we are not yet in the, the over the state mandated what the level can be for equalized pupils. Once you go above a certain level, you get hit with a penalty. And we are not in that point yet.
So it can get worse than a half a million dollar?
Well, my, my guess is, after calculating these numbers, is that Grafton's been doing this for years.
Yeah, we just said, have to pay for it on the school.
Because we generate more revenue through taxes by state law than we spend in the indicator.
Any other questions? Carolyn, could you, would you respond to this as a legislature? I mean, I don't wanna put you on the spot, but...
Any other legislators here? Well, I appreciate the opportunity to be with you. I just came from the Wyndham School Board meeting. I'm the Chair of the School Board, so I'm wearing a couple of hats right now. And what was our topic of conversation? Education funding. So I, as you probably know, I'm not a big fan of Act 46, but I think some of what you're talking about, I mean, part of this is Act 46, but part of it's Act 60. And somebody asked a question about what's a gold town? And I was just asked that question at the Wyndham School Board meeting, and I gave an answer that the business manager agreed to. So I'll say, I'll, I'll explain this to you. I want you to imagine that I'm holding a map of the state of Vermont, and superimposed on it is a sheet that has all of the geographical boundaries, the, all the town boundaries. And each town, this is before Act 60, each town raised money for its own students, okay? In Wyndham, the tax rate was really low, because we have very few students, and 16,000, I think, acres of taxable land. So it was very easy to raise funds. But then along came the Brigham lawsuit, and the Brigham decision, which said that we needed to provide equal opportunity for education for all students. And so towns like Wyndham found it very easy to raise money to educate the kids, whereas a town like Rockingham, not to pick on Rockingham, Fairhaven where my sister lived, Springfield, we're all in the same sort of boat, lots of kids, not a lot of taxable property. And so the legislature at that time, that was a year before I got into the legislature, devised a system by which a penny on anyone's tax rate raised the same amount of money. Over the years, there have been a lot, there was Act 68, which reduced the incentive for towns like Stratton to form foundations and raise money to bring down their spending level to the, it was 5,000 some hundred, you know, at the time, so that they were just taxed the very base rate. But over the years, it has morphed itself with equalized pupils, and equal, and CLAs, and CODs, and, and at this point, I'm not really very good at explaining the funding system, and it's also the end of the day, and I've been at meetings since about 12:30, so please don't ask me to get into the weeds on this. But I am, I really am opposed, you know, I've been opposed for, actually not, it took, you know, I did vote for Act 46, I'm gonna tell you that. It was explained to me that this gave everybody an opportunity to talk with each other, there were off-rams that, you know, were, you know, would allow towns to write their own, you know, plans and what have you. I wrote the town, basically wrote the plan for the town of Wyndham, and in my view, it was essentially ignored by the Board, the Agency of Education. So, so at this point, as some of you know, I've, you know, Wyndham had its vote, we're standing alone, we still have our own school board, which I chair, and, and I, we're part of the lawsuit. Hopefully, we're gonna prevail in that. And I don't know what to tell you, in particular with your, you know, your situation here. I will say, however, that last year's, our last year budget went up 16.26% because, this is in Wyndham, because we had pre-K special ed, for which we are not reimbursed. We are reimbursed for kids who are K through, you know, 23 or 22 years old, but we are not reimbursed for pre-K, which seems really wrong-headed. And I will say that last year, I made a pitch for changing that, so the pre-K special ed kids were covered. With, and, and nobody actually could believe me. When I took this to the Chair of the Education Committee, she did not believe me that we weren't reimbursed. But if we are, it's such a miniscule amount that they use it to hire the teachers at the, at the SU level. So if you have questions, I'd be glad to try and answer them, but I can make no guarantees. I may, I'm happy to research them for you, if I can, but that's where I stand. And we are way over the penalty level, we're at 21,000, and I think the penalty level's at 18 something. So you're lucky if you are below the penalty level. And historically, I've always shot for that, but, you know, we had pre-K special ed costs that were... But, you know, we had pre-K special ed costs that were forty-five thousand dollars.
How many students do you have at this school? How many students do you have?
We're up to nineteen, actually. Yeah, we just had a family move in with seven kids.
But you do have zero to three-year-olds have pre-identified concerns. That's in special ed.
Yeah, but we cover the cost for that, but it is not reimbursed. So that's, that's a big hit.
You're early identified, so you prevent more.
Well, we don't prevent the expense. I'm all for giving kids what they need to become, you know, good citizens, good educated citizens. I'm not opposed to that. But what I object to is that once you're five years, eleven months, you get covered for special ed. But from zero to that age, you are not. In my view, that's wrong.
I have a question, Carolyn, and I don't remember the governor who said this, but there was a promise, I think it was through Act sixty, that the resident would never pay more than a non-resident. And we are paying more than a non-resident. So what happened to this promise?
We're paying way more.
Oh, I know.
I don't know who made that promise.
Which governor? I don't remember. I don't remember when. I don't know, but...
I mean, it must have been Howard Dean if it was back then. But that was the year before I got in. But yeah, in Wyndham, we're paying more, quite a bit more. Now, residents are able to apply for income sensitivity and I highly recommend that you do that. If you're above the level, which is, I think, ninety to a hundred thousand dollars, then you're kind of out of luck. But, and I will also tell you, if your tax bills are way off, as my husband's and mine was, I recommend that you check because what I found out was that one of the homestead declaration forms, and I forget the number.
A just one twenty-two.
Yeah, but there's an A and a B.
Oh, there's an A, yeah.
So one of them got through, oh, sorry, do you need to get by me? One of them got through on the computer, but the other one didn't. Our tax preparer had prepared that. Do you want to pass me over my stuff? Here, oh, okay. So make sure that everything, if you have a tax preparer, make sure that everything gets through. Yeah, because our taxes went way up and, you know, we don't, we're not making any more and our land value has not changed, so... If you have any more questions, feel free to contact me through the legislative website. You all probably can find my phone number, eight seven four four one eight two. You're welcome to call me any, well, not if you're nine o'clock in the morning. Anyway, I'm happy to try and help folks. If people have had trouble with the tax department, I'm happy to help with that as well. So any other questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Carolyn. Appreciate you coming.
I'm going to leave.
No, absolutely.
I'm going to go away. Thank you all. I really do appreciate your... Oh, anytime. Yeah, thanks so much.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Danny, you're on the highway report.
Once it rains, we're going to just add lowen leaves and enough of ditch lanes, more grading as it stops raining. They're still all in the sand.
That's it?
That's it. That's enough to do before we have to record.
So with the rain, you're going to be grading too?
After the rain.
Any other questions with Danny, concerns? Appreciate it. I guess, Rich, you're on as the health officer, so... Would you like to come up here and talk to us? So from there, it's up to you.
Whatever you want.
No, you feel more comfortable?
If I could squeeze by. Not much to say. I don't know what...
You have that different...
We've been meeting as a committee two or three times to research what the health officer position is going to look like. I don't think we really had any kind of earth-shattering new news as far as I'm concerned. Position is, unless the select board gives more guidance, I think it's pretty much as close how the office has been running. You know, we'll be reactive versus proactive. If there is some kind of complaint, I will act on it, whether it be, you know, animal complaint or rental complaint or whatever. I guess the only thing that I ask, I guess, is just inform me if something does happen. I mean, the only thing that we've had in town the last few months was a rabies bite, I guess, and I heard about it a week later, so I guess, I guess. Tell me about it. I mean, like I said, unless if the select board wants to, you know, reevaluate something or rehash something or redo something as far as the office is concerned, I'm not too sure what the direction, other than what we have been doing, will be going. I know, like I said, the committee has met and I don't really think we came up with anything different and more Suzanne or Kathy can certainly say something. And as far as the committee goes, I mean, as far as I was concerned, I was there more of a spectator more than a... Because I didn't think that it was right that I really throw around my opinion too, too much being the health officer. Any questions? I mean, I'd answer.
Carolyn, do you have anything to add about the committee status or where we are?
We met several times. Our committees, Christine Tattersall, Suzanne Welch, Stamack, myself, and Rich. And basically, we digested the manual. Going over what the duties are, what, how do you do a complaint? Is it enforceable? Record keeping? The duties of what the select board have to do in terms of the health officer. So we looked at everything and pretty much, you can't change the statutes that are down there. They tell you, you have to receive, if you receive any complaints, it could be a rental of a house because the health department is in charge of that code. Rich mentioned animal control, testing the water of public pools. It goes on and on and on. So there's a lot to it. And we're looking at it and we'll come up with the recommendations for the board.
I just got one thing. I don't know if Kim knows. There were two septic in the village that's been repaired over the last month. Did anything come through to the town clerk, any kind of permit or at least some sort of an indication from the state? Because any septic work, I believe, was supposed to go through, you know, be engineered through the state.
Right, and then we get something from the state itself.
Yeah, so, and that's one thing. I think that that's really important, that the health officer at least be aware of. And that would have to come from, you know, if it came from the contractor to you and then, and then to Rich. Because I think that's one of the, one of the main things that, you know, we deal with here, particularly in the very tight village, are the septic issues. And with the two that were repaired, both reasonably minor repairs, but it, but it has to do with the septic system. So I think that those should be something that he should be aware of.
The state, I know, lets us know when there's a new septic system being designed and installed and then it's inspected and then it's passed. And I get all that. I don't get much on any renewal unless it's a replacement.
Well, these were sort of repairs on both of them, so that's something that should...
Bill, you have something?
That permit is sent to the landowner. And I had the same problem as Springfield. They are, and I had a problem, and I told the state on how many times, "Put a big thing at the top. You, the landowner, are required to record this because it's down in about the third paragraph that's in normal type and everything." "Oh, and by the way, you should record this." They have to, they have to record it for it to be on. And if they don't record it, we have no idea. So if you know people are working on it and you might just say, "Oh, by the way, when do you get the permit? Bring it in to record it so your property has the proper recording." That said, if you go on the line, online, you can find every permit by address on the ANR Atlas. But, but people just, they ignore that because they don't see that they have an obligation to record that if they want it to be there.
Well, the state does send them to me for new septic. And the landowner then brings one in also, so I get like a double whammy.
Yeah, but we used to get a notice, but it wasn't a recordable document. The recordable document has to come in from the, they change their practice.
And paper, paper for the recording.
Yeah, they have to come in, paper for the recording, yes.
I think it's one of the things that we really want to change now with the new rules and regulations that are coming out, that the health officer is at least aware of any repairs or septic systems. Because that is such a huge issue.
What about new ones? Do you want me to give some sort of a spreadsheet so whenever I get something, I can just notify the...
And then what's going to happen is what Kathy and this group is meeting for is we want to create a file and the select board, there's really no policy having to deal with the health officer on rules and regulations and things. So that's something we're also working to do, is create a policy. And then that way, anything that happens, whether if it's a new septic or a replacement or a repair to it, then there's a file associated with it. And that's, that's kind of where we want to go with this whole thing.
Stan, can we, can we add to have some regulation that if the septic system is in need of repair or failure, that they notify the town so that...
Well, there should be, but it is. It's a state thing right now. It's not a town. It's one of those things you have to sort of step up and actually create that. Right now, it's a state mandate.
Could we modify our ordinance to do that?
If we had one.
We have a septic company on the...
Oh, that's, yeah.
We can take care of that. If she's getting the copy that's not recordable, we will just give her that and make sure the homeowner brings it in. We'll do that.
Okay. Would the committee consider contacting the state and identifying an issue we have as far, the very issue that was just discussed? And said, "Look, you know, you want us to help. We need to be informed." And maybe they can change the form slightly so that it helps to correct the situation.
That would make sense, yeah.
I mean, you can try.
Right.
I agree. They should try.
But if the, say, a resident complains about an order of their, of the neighboring septic system, calls the town, calls U-Cam or calls Bill, that goes to the town health officer. He has to follow up on that complaint.
Oh, yeah.
And that's, you know, he's going to follow the procedures in the manual, what, because it talks about.
Right.
And it's any health risk to the public. If that order was a health risk to the public, he's going to follow through and he's going to go through the procedures of the inspection.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Rich, are you all set?
As good as you are.
Okay, well, thank you. All right.
Get back to work.
Kim, I think you're on on this restrict the fund balance motion here. Maybe you can explain it?
Okay, I gave all of the board members their sheet. And again, I went through everybody individually and explained how highway monies that were voted on at the beginning of the year at town meeting. And if there were to be any surplus remaining from the highway section, it needs to then revert back to the highway for the following year, whether it be the surplus is to reduce the budget in the following year, whether you direct it into any particular slot for highway. But it is restricted as highway. So your first one is the highway taxes. It's restricted money. It was voted on at town meeting. People have paid their taxes towards the highway of the five hundred and thirty-one thousand one oh six. State aid comes in for, it comes in a grant form from the state of Vermont, four highways for our class two and three roads to help support the roads. That is classified as just highway, the one twenty-one, nine twenty. The better back roads is restricted because it was refunded through grants for the WRC and the BBR grants, better back road grants. We spend money in my, in Danny's expenditure line item, but we get reimbursed in the general. Audit on a yearly basis keeps track of what we get in to offset the expenditure. That's where the sixteen four ten comes in. Then what's happened in the past, it's always when we're figuring our budget in the town report, the town gets current use money. So for all the land that is in current use in the town of Grafton, a portion of it gets reimbursed by the state. The individuals have a break in their taxes, but the state makes up for the break that they got. And so then we get in a form of about, we budget about a hundred and one thousand dollars. This year, it came in to be about a hundred and twenty-nine thousand in total. So when we're making the budget out, we know for revenue purposes we're going to get in that current use money. In the past, we've inherited that we split it and we give half to the highway budget and we deduct half from the selectman's budget. Well, in essence, we are now going to restrict highway money to be highway money. That current use typically now and moving forward is going to go in the general funding of the highway. But because we intended on it for all these years past, that sixty thousand four hundred and ninety this year can be used towards the highway. Not as restricted. It was not intended for highway. But because we have the intent for highway, we can still do it, but as a board, you would want to assign it. So bottom line is, we revenue seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand nine twenty-six. And these are not concrete figures because our audit's not done, but I've spoken with our audit department on Friday. I'm pretty confident of these numbers. Total expenditures for the highway was six hundred and thirty-three thousand nine thirty-three. So you subtract it and it's ninety-five thousand nine ninety-three to the good. Okay, so surplus of that, only thirty-five thousand five oh three is considered really restricted highway monies. And that's where we need, because there's talk and we always wanted to move retreatment into the reserve retreatment, this is your opportunity to move whatever you have for surplus into that reserve. You would want to make sure that if that is what you want to do, the motion would be to move the restricted monies of thirty-five thousand five oh three into the reserve of the highway retreatment fund. The sixty thousand four ninety that was the current use, you can assign that anywhere you'd like to as a board. You can assign all of it to the retreatment. It'll go into the retreatment, but we always know that sixty thousand four hundred and ninety can come out of that reserve because it was only assigned. It was not restricted. But you're assigning it to it, so you can actually start building that retreatment.
But once you assign it to it?
It's still, you can still take it out when it was only assigned. It wasn't voted on by the voters.
I thought once it went into it, it was there.
No, no, you can do what you want.
The thirty-five thousand, you can't take out.
Yes.
Right, but the sixty you could, if needed.
And if you remember, Stan, I think we had a discussion last time that we were talking about, you know, why would we, if we have a deficit, why would we have to raise taxes? Well, I understand there's no deficit.
Right.
So we could put the whole ninety-five thousand into the retreatment if the board so desires, without any effect on deficit or whatever.
Right. We actually, when we take a look at the final numbers for the end of June, we revenue one million one eighty-three five fifty-four and we expended one million sixty-seven five fifty-eight. So... So in essence, we're looking at 115,986. So you take off the 35 restricted, would leave the 80,483. If you reuse the current use at 60,490, we're left actually with a surplus of $19,994 in the general fund. So we're good, no matter what.
We had a good year.
So yeah, so if you have any questions, as long as the motions, when you do, if you do decide to, make sure you use the numbers for the restricted. And then the 60,0490 would be assigned.
Yeah, and if the board decides that they want to put the whole thing, it would, it would require two motions.
Right.
Put the whole thing into the...
Yeah, if that's what the board desires.
Retreatment, retreatment funds.
Right, but there would be two motions. One motion to take the restricted funds of 35,000 and change, and the assigned of 60,000 to the paving or the highway retreatment fund that we have created last year.
Well, I'll make, I'll make an initial motion that we remove the, move 35,503, the restricted funds into the retreatment fund.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, any further discussion on the 35,000 restricted money to go into the fund that was established last year? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we have a, we have motion, Ken, that satisfies you now for this, for the orders?
Yeah.
So now we have to deal with the 60,000.
I make a motion that we add that 60,000 to the treatment reserve as well.
The assigned.
Or sign, sign to the reserve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Bill?
60,949.
Yes.
60,490.
Correct.
Any discussion, further discussion? All in favor of Alan's motion to remove, to move the 60,490 into the, the assigned amount into the highway fund? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passed.
So I will then be able to construct, try and what to do with Sarah, and then we'll finalize our actual audit relatively soon.
Okay, is that, is that satisfying you, Kim, or is there anything else we need to talk about?
Yeah, no, that, that's, that's great. You have any questions? But moving forward, the current use now will reduce the general, but not the highway. So when we vote at town meeting, if our, if our budget stays about the same and we're level funding, you're going to actually see that we're going to vote on that article is going to be less because we're going to keep the entire amount of current use that comes in. But you're not going to see it on the highway side, so the highway is going to look a little bit higher, but they're going to wash. It just, one's restricted, one's not, okay?
Yeah, by the time you get to the bottom, bottom line.
It'll be the system.
Yeah, it's just a matter of... Okay, the budget. Anybody have any questions or comments on the third quarter? The third quarter, is it not?
It's only first quarter.
First quarter, sorry.
Chris, I think you had a few you asked me.
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, you asked my questions, unless you want to hear me.
I have those three answers for you.
Why don't you give them yourselves?
Chris was asking, what was it, about computers?
The computers or the computers? Yeah, tech support, is that it?
No, you asked why the computers were so high.
Yes, we're at 67% already of the first quarter.
And the reason for that is we have to pay NAMRE, which is our support system, of $1,460 at the beginning of each year. And we also pay New England Patriot, which is the support of the listers. So that sucks up like quarters of that first, one year. Then you asked me about the small equipment fund in Danny's, and that related to a piece of equipment we must have rented from Jamie. Gregory, Danny, do you know that, this year?
Kind of like a fine line. Some of that could have been for the 35,000, I guess.
Okay, yeah, he was the only one who couldn't make that one up.
Right, so that could have been quoted out of there.
But, but wouldn't that come out of the capital budget?
No.
No?
No. My portion would have come out of there, and if that's what it is, it would be, because that was a grant, it'd be reimbursed back.
You would still show the expense under that account.
Right. Because I have to code a slip to something.
The last one you asked me about, Chris, was road repair. And Danny, you can speak of this, but it was Eastman sand and gravel. Did we get a stockpile of sand all at one time?
So there's, there's the gravel correction in Holland just above it.
Right.
And then the road repair, they're essentially the same type thing. So rather than trying to break part of the bill, I hope, just code the whole bill as a one.
Okay.
So I run, when I'm doing numbers, I run them two together. So if one's over the other one, it probably shows a little bit of a positive left, cover the other negative.
Yeah, usually the first quarter doesn't, doesn't reflect a lot because it's when you get into the second or third quarters, you can see a trend if we're, if we're in trouble or this.
Yeah, but that road repair material was high, it was 127% first quarter.
Yeah, a couple others are that high just because of the, like, the chloride.
Right.
As dry as it is this year, that's going to be over.
Yeah, it is.
The regional shows are negative because it's grand. We spend the money, and then we get reimbursed. And it never shows coming back into here.
That's the top line of revenue.
We discussed that.
Like this year, the, the 65,35, one of the grants we put through late, so there's another $18,000 in the GIE grant that actually is going to show up in this year's budget. That actually was spent out of the one we just added. So you would have had another $18,000 on top of that 35, if it would have all happened in the same year. But you, like I said, the grants usually come in.
Right. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Kim.
Any other questions on the boardroom? Kim?
Not to skip around, but I know we just talked about the assigned and the restricted, and I just want to let the board know too, that we're already in this fiscal year. So our taxes were based again with splitting the current use 50/50, so we're going to go through the same scenario probably at the end of this fiscal year that we're in right now when they go to audit. But moving forward in a budgeting process, it's not going to happen again. We're already in this year, it's been done again.
The personnel reviews, we've kind of touched base. Alan and I, since we both serve on the personnel committee, we have planned to do the evaluation sometime late November, early December, right? And, and Danny, you would need to do your evaluations by the first of December, basically, if, or when you get a chance, okay?
Yes.
The budget workshop, you've got the, you've got the sheets from Kim. You need to start doing your homework. And if you have any questions, obviously, Kim is available to answer. And I think at, at the next meeting, which will be on the 20, 21st, we'll set some dates for the budget workshops, so keep that in mind. And we also, you also need to gift to Hardy or give it to, to Bill, so he can give it to Hardy, your desires for the capital budget, and the deadline would be the next select board's meeting. The capital budget committee will be working on that, and if you have some things that you would like to have them look at, please give them to Bill or directly to Hardy. And that, that, this whole budget process will start probably first of November. Yes, Bill?
If any of the persons that also benefit by capital budget have items for their particular departments, like fire or rescue or emergency management, make sure that we have them listed in, for instance, the hazard mitigation plan listed us, and I think we pretty much duplicated them in, we wanted for the town. But make sure that those needs are known. So not just, not just you guys, but everybody in town who has a capital budget, has a legitimate capital budget agenda, should get that number to Hardy.
Yeah, that's right. Okay. And maybe, maybe heads up to the library and the fire department and whatever.
I talked to Rich today.
Yeah, so they should start working on that as well. Particularly for the fire department, for you, for the capital budget, for the trucks and whatever else. Okay, anything else on the budget? Okay. Hazard mitigation plan, Bill, I think you want to take that we're supposed to approve this thing today.
Everybody has signed it, signed it, and hopefully we have inside of you a degree, because we do get credit. I have the hazard mitigation plan with me. I've sent it around, it's posted on the internet. It was, it was sent to the state. They went through their list of it, of the, what is required in the plan, and that was approved. It was sent to FEMA, and that's approved. But the way it works at FEMA is you have to adopt it, then it's sent back to FEMA for them to get final approval. And that's, that's the stage we're at now. It's already, and I've sent it to all of you, and again, it's, it's posted on the website if anybody wants to go through it. What it does, it, it goes through the history of, of storms and disasters in the town. And then it looks at basically the, where we're weak in infrastructure, or where there are issues of infrastructure, whether we are weak or not simply because of the topography, and what we need to repair before it happens, and, and how we need to plan to be ready for the next disaster. So all, all that's in the hazard mitigation plan. Again, it's gone through both the state and FEMA, it's all been approved, and just waiting for your adoption. And what I need from you is somebody to make the, do all those whereas's that are in the form. And then everybody sign it when they're done.
Who wants to do that?
Do you? Are you the only one with a copy of it?
I, I only have the certificate of adoption.
Can we start with a motion for the consent to hazard mitigation plan?
No, you start with, that's all you got to do. You just have to adopt.
Okay.
Go ahead and read this.
Please.
Town of Grafton, 2019 to 2023 All-Hazard Mitigation Plan, October 7, 2019. Certificate of Adoption, Town of Grafton Select Board. Resolution adopting the Town of Grafton 2018, 2023 All-Hazard Mitigation Plan. Whereas the Town of Grafton has worked with New England Digital Resources to prepare an updated hazard mitigation plan for the town to identify natural hazards, analyze past and potential future damages due to natural and man-made caused disasters, and identify strategies for mitigating future damages. And whereas duly noticed, public meetings were held by the Grafton Select Board on July 1, 2019 to present and receive public comment on the draft plan. And whereas the updated Town of Grafton 2019 to 2023 Local Hazard Mitigation Plan demonstrates the community's commitment to implementing the mitigation strategies and authorizes responsible agencies to execute their actions. And whereas the updated Town of Grafton 2019 to 2023 Local Hazard Mitigation Plan was submitted to Vermont Emergency Management and the Federal Emergency Management Agency for review on August 5, 2019. And now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Grafton Select Board hereby adopts the 2019 to 2023 Grafton Local Hazard Mitigation Plan for municipal use and implementation, duly adopted this 7th day of October 2019.
So that's all we need to do?
And then you need to sign, each member needs to sign, please.
Select Board Chair and each member now sign.
There was a lot of work involved in getting this thing.
And, and by the way, I had you sign in tonight because that's worth about $50 a person toward our match.
Go, Bill.
That's why we did that. Anybody who hasn't signed it, before you leave tonight, please sign it. Mr. Chair, whilst they're doing that, could you, could they sign the decision? LTA, it's not part of the agenda, but that's the decision on, on giving up that road.
Kathy has notes. And Alan, you can just hold that there or give it to Bill when you leave. So I have a question. I did not attend the hearing for LTA. I watched the video of, of the hearing. I know it's taking place. May I sign that? Although I was not at the meeting, but...
No, it's a quasi judicial hearing, it should just be signed by those who actually heard it.
That's why I asked.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is the town plan. First item of that, should the plan be sent to a professional writer?
I ask that that be put on there. My initial thought was it might clear up some of the little, for lack of another word, maybe oddities that are in the plan, some of it that doesn't read proper or proper punctuation in it, to try to speed up the process and get it moving in the, in the proper direction. But the more I look at it, I'm going to withdraw that, that I think it's, we're at a point now that hopefully we can just pass this thing forward, get moving on it, and then when the town plan gets back to the planning commission after it's been approved, and they start going through the review again for their next amendments, that the, these small changes can then take place. So as far as I'm concerned, unless anybody else on the board has anything to say, we should skip over that issue and just proceed down to the, to the next issue.
Do we need a second on that, and do we need to vote on it, or is the withdrawal what's required?
I, I think all you need is a withdrawal, but I believe, unless there's, unless there's an objection or you want to make any action.
There was, there was no action, it was just, we were pursuing it, and I'm just willing to back away from it, try to move forward.
The next item on the town plan is the procedure for the 17th. It's been outlined, it's been posted on the hearing. And after, after the hearing takes place at the school, there will be a, depending on what, what is resolved, there will be a special meeting of the select board. I just want to point out...
The, the actual agendas for that hearing are here.
Yeah, right. It's here, it's posted, it's here. I want to point out that if there is any changes, if anybody would like to make changes to the plan, they need to be in writing, and it can be submitted to, to Bill either before or on the 17th. We are, and we are not going to accept any kind of, well, I don't like this, or I want to change it to that. It has to be in writing because the board needs to address any change. So there has to be a written change so that we can either vote for or against or have a discussion with it. And if there's something does come up at the hearing that somebody remembers, then write it down at the hearing, and then pass it up to the board so that we can deal with it. And if you could get all these changes or objections, or, or not objections, but changes to the plan to us ahead of time, then we can, we can make this thing go speedy. And I would like to, to put on a, a two-hour deadline so that, you know, if it goes past the two hours to, you know, eight o'clock at night... past the two hours to, you know, eight o'clock at night, then we can, we can recess and call in another hearing and do it. So, uh, basically, um, anything you have that you'd like to see changed in writing, you know, reference it to the paragraph or whatever so we have, okay? Yes?
Which draft plan will be, that will be there to be discussed?
The latest draft plan that was sent to everybody today, correct?
I sent it to a whole bunch of people today, but no, the plan that's in front for the hearing is the plan that is, it's called the Ju- July 11 Plan. It's on the, it's on the website. Also on the website is the Ju- July 11 Plan with the energy chapter, pages 38 to 49, has some edits. That is, those edits have to do with the email I sent out today after getting a ruling from Wyndham Regional. And, and so, uh, but what is actually before you is this July 11 Plan.
That was the one that was adopted by the Select Board.
Adopted by the Select Board. That is legally what's in front of you.
Yes, I, I'm just trying to get clarification here, so taking what was sent out today, uh, am I to assume that then the Select Board itself would, is moving or considering turning down the Ju- July 11 Plan and adopting?
I, I, you can't make that, you can't make that assumption because the board can, has not... That is, that is a proposal by a member of the Select Board. Nobody else has seen it except one other person that was between the Chair and the, and the Vice Chair. No one else has seen that. No one's voted on it. That's not anybody's, but it was, it was meant to deal with the issue of, of making it more restrictive on wind. But that is part of the discussion that would have to take place on the 17th.
Right. And if that doesn't suffice, then somebody would amend that so that it could be voted upon.
Mr. Chair, will the, uh, written public comments about the plan be posted on the website in advance of the hearing?
I could do that.
If you so desire, okay.
Depends when I come in.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Yes, Alan?
Um, the special Select Board meeting on October 17th, there's no time.
It follows the hearing.
It follows the hearing. So whatever the hearing is, I don't need a clock or seven o'clock, that's what it'll follow.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, are there details on the Wyndham Regional ruling? Like what, what was requested of them?
I have nothing back from John in writing. When I get it back from John in writing, I'll get it out to everybody. But I've gotten nothing from the board.
Okay, so can you also, um, broadcast what, you know, what we sent to them?
Oh, yeah, I sent him, I sent him the plan. I sent him the...
The July 17 Plan?
July 17 Plan.
Not the original town.
No, he's had, he's had that one.
Right, okay.
The report that was done on July 17 Plan.
By whom?
By the Planning Commission.
Okay.
Okay, and, uh, then I sent him, uh, just so he was aware of it, the possible edits to the energy plant that was, that was put forward to make it more strict on the wind, just so he was aware of that.
So can we get a copy of your correspondence with him?
Yeah.
And what he intends to do?
Sure, I just...
Is that okay?
Basically just send him, there it is, yeah.
Okay, yeah. That's public information, right?
Yes, total public information.
Yeah, so where, where would we find that?
I'll put it on the website.
On the website?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, uh, do we have any public comment? Yes.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. I don't know whether it falls in the category of public comment or other business. Um, so I'll take a stab at it, a public comment. Give my vote.
Okay, it's okay.
Um, full disclosure, I'm about to ask this question due to my affiliation with the Wyndham Foundation and not as a private citizen as I usually come to these meetings, speaking as a private citizen. Just wondering if you'd be able to share the condition under which, uh, in executive session, the Wyndham Foundation was added to the topics to be discussed?
Um, I, I don't know, Bill, this is a...
It's, it is going to have to do with, uh, contract and, and land negotiation.
Um, thank you, perfect.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other, Alan? Okay, any other business? Okay, um, we need a motion to, um, enter into executive session.
So, um...
A second? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, just remind everybody that we have the, the 17th of the public hearing and Select Board meetings to follow on the, on the 7th. And the next Select Board meeting, regular meeting, will be on the 21st. Yes, Alan?
Do you want to invite anybody into this executive session?
Just Bill, that's all.
Just Bill?
Okay. Thank you for all coming.